Okay, so I'm going to call to order the Woburn School Committee meeting for May 27th, 2020. Could the superintendent please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry. Could we all please stand and salute the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Let us observe a quick moment of silence for anybody in our community that continues to suffer from the devastating effects of the coronavirus. Thank you. Could the superintendent's secretary to the school committee please call the roll?
Ms. Chisholm.
Here.
Ms. Cormier.
Here.
Ms. Kissel.
Here.
Ms. Lipsit.
Here.
Ms. Morenne.
Present.
Here.
Ms. Crowley.
Present. Okay, good evening, everybody.
You forgot me, Matt, but anyways.
Dr. Wells is here as well. Okay, so everyone is present. I want to apologize for the technological difficulties. It appears that Zoom has a 100-person capacity limit. This meeting will be recorded and made available to the public. I did check with the executive order issued by the governor, and as long as we make our public meeting available to the public, they do not need to watch it in real time. So we're going to move forward with the meeting, and I will state that we are being recorded pursuant to the executive order. And so if your face is being shown, it will be recorded, and also Ms. Jen Gata is recording our meeting as well, Woburn Public Media. First on the agenda, we have the approval of records on 4/16/20. Any action?
Motion to approve.
Second, and we have a motion to approve the minutes in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Mr. Cormier.
Ms. Cormier says yes.
Sorry.
He's having a tough day.
Happens to me all the time.
Here we go. Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Ms. Morenne.
Yes, in favor.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that those records have been approved. Moving on, we have a meeting tomorrow night, just so the public knows, and I need a motion from the school committee to allow the school committee to post our budget per the public hearing on the school website, because that's different. So I have a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Morenne.
In favor.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so our budget pursuant to the public hearing that will be scheduled for June 1st as of now will be published on the Woburn Public Schools website, and that will be made available 48 hours before our public hearing. Okay, moving on, reports and presentation of superintendent and staff. We have to dispose of an issue regarding high school graduation. There have been some changes despite Ms. Callanan's extreme efforts in this in this matter, so I will recognize either Ms. Callanan or Dr. Crowley in that regard.
I'm happy to speak on it. I don't know if Ms. Callanan's on the, if she made.
She is.
Yes, I can see her.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Jess. Well, if you want to, I'll turn it to you, Jess, if you want.
Okay. Hello again, everyone of the school committee. I know that you're very busy, so I appreciate your time. Basically, what has transpired since the first plan that was endorsed by the school committee was that that was deemed that the city could not support that, the parade idea, that it was too much of a health concern. And so I met with Dr. Crowley, the mayor, the chief of police, and David Dunkley immediately after the last, that school committee meeting when that was endorsed, and started drafting a new plan that consisted of small groups of students coming across the field, walking across the stage to receive their diplomas. And then that was shared with, to my understanding, with the school committee or with Ms. Crowley, through Dr. Crowley, and I was given the go-ahead to release that to the community, which I did. And I'm going to be oddly specific here, but I sent it to parents and students, seniors, at about 1:45 on the 21st of May, which was last Thursday. At 3:03 PM, the commissioner and the Department of Public Health issued new guidance that basically summarized, made it very difficult for us to carry out the plan in the timeframe that we were hoping to do. So I thought that I would be coming here this evening to ask the school committee to simply vote on a date of graduation, which we were hoping would be June 13th with a rain date of June 14th, where students walked across the stage and received their diploma. And then the state came forward with guidance, and I'm going to read it just to make sure I don't say anything incorrect, that from now until July 18th, that only virtual or extremely limited ceremonies could happen. They gave an example of a car parade following strict safety protocols from the CDC and the state. And then after July 19th, or after July 18th, beginning July 19th, that small groups would be able to celebrate a graduation, like the plan that I had just had shared with families and the whole community about 10 minutes prior to the commissioner sharing his plan. And so basically, it puts us in a situation where we have one plan that was endorsed that isn't able to be supported at the city level because of safety concerns, which is something Mr. Morenne did bring up in that last meeting. And then new guidance from the state and the commissioner that says that you cannot have small groups come together until after July 18th. And so what I would respectfully propose is that we push graduation to July 24th or 25th with a rain date of 26th, and have the small groups go across the stage on the field outside in groups of 20. Or we opt to have something prior to that in the form of a car parade that's a much smaller scale than what we, I had proposed in the last meeting that the school committee endorsed. That is something that is allowed under the new guidance from the state. I will be quiet and answer any questions, and Dr. Crowley obviously knows all of this as well.
Thank you. Dr. Crowley, would you like to be recognized to add anything before we vote?
Well, I just, first of all, Ms. Callanan, of course, did a great job summarizing the complexity of what we're trying to deal with, when to plan something and then have things move in real time. So I appreciate her work and the high school's work to honor the class of 2020. I've worked with Mayor Galvin and other city officials who also support if we're going to do the on-field graduation, pushing it to the July 25th date as outlined by the new guidance. And so my recommendation aligns with what Ms. Callanan just said. If it's an on-field ceremony, which Ms. Callanan can speak to, I think that it was well-received by the staff and students. They really liked the idea of having the opportunity to cross the stage. If that is in fact the will of the high school, I would absolutely support it, but with the date of the 25th.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion recommendation from Ms. Callanan.
Thank you, Mr. Morenne. I just want to recognize Dr. Wells, who had his hand raised.
And I think, I think the superintendent might have answered the question by just what, so you did talk to the student leaders and their, that's what they would rather have, an on-field thing in July.
Well, Dr. Wells, from the very beginning, the students wanted a full graduation, as you might imagine. And when I said to them that that probably wasn't possible, and I presented the rolling rally, the students were pretty disappointed in that, at least the student leaders that I had been meeting with pretty regularly, they're wonderful kids, and so they understood where we were coming from and that we were trying to ensure everyone was safe and include as many people as possible. But, you know, in the survey that was sent out at the very beginning, the students did have a preference to have more of a traditional graduation and walking across the stage than having a rolling rally. And then as this has progressed, which there's been many, many iterations of this work, I would say, I did not survey everyone again, but when the plan was released, I would say that it was overwhelmingly positive from the students and parents, first being very thankful of all the work that all of us are doing to support the class of 2020, but then really loving the idea that students would be able to have their cap and gown on, and even though not the same, you know, walk across the stage and have their name read. And so that's what I was striving to do.
Thank you.
Ms. Chisholm, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. I just, I just want to make sure that whatever the kids want are the majority, because you're not going to please everybody, as we know all the time. I think that it's their class, they should be able to do what they like to do. But if we can just assure, but Dr. Wells seems to think that the people that are going into military will not be leaving prior to this, but should we know somebody, if just you could present a diploma to them so that they can at least do something before they leave Woburn? I just want to make sure that nobody actually leaves and doesn't get their diploma.
Absolutely, Ms. Chisholm, and I have heard that some boot camps are being, basic training is being moved up earlier, and some are getting postponed. I think it just depends on which branch of service you're entering and what your job is in the military. But I have the names of those students that are going into the military, and I certainly, if they would not be here, I certainly would make sure they get their diploma ahead of time.
Okay, other than that, that's all's good. And thank you again. I'm sure this has been, you know, and we may even find out on July 20th that it's extended till August, so.
That is a concern that I have, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments, Mrs. Chisholm. Mr. Kissel?
Quick question. I missed it on the, any of the correspondences. So where, kids are going to walk across the stage, where are the parents, where are the family at that point? I wasn't sure if I heard that piece.
So the only people that would be allowed, and this is based on the Department of Ed and Department of Public Health guidance, is immediate family, which we're limiting to two people in addition to the graduate. They would pull up in a staging area with their cars, they would stay in their cars until they were asked to step out. There would be one area where the families line up six feet apart, and then that the graduates line up six feet apart. There's a standing area only with markers marked off on the football field, because it would be 20 students at a time, so they're, it would be red, and then they would exit in a different location, so they're not crossing paths with the people as they exit the field.
Gotcha, okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so Ms. Morenne had made a motion, and I didn't have a second on it.
A second.
Okay, so it's a motion to approve the plan and the graduation for July 25th, 2020, with a rain date of July 26, 2020. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm. Ms. Chisholm.
It's not off, I'm muted. Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Ms. Morenne.
Yes, in favor.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes. That will be the date of graduation, and I want to say excellent work, Ms. Callanan, and I'm very, I'm very looking forward just watching the ceremony.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for your support.
Of course. So moving on to the meat of our meeting, we have a budget discussion, I will say for the, for the public ears. We, I'm not expecting a final vote on this. There may be some adjustments, but this is simply preliminary discussions.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Morenne.
I did have my hand raised. I've been notified that Dr. Baldassari cannot enter the meeting at this time, so once again, I'd like you to make a request for folks to possibly leave the meeting and exit, and at that time, I'd also entertain a motion for the executive session so that Dr. B can present that for a short time, because he's blocked out right now. The Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Baldassari, so if you get the gist of it, he's out, he can't, he wants to get in, and when he does that, he'd also like to move the order of business to an executive session earlier rather than later. If not, I'm fine with whatever the committee decides. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd just like to make an announcement. We're going to recess the meeting for a minute in order to ask somebody to please leave the meeting so that Dr. Baldassari can please enter the meeting. I need him to conduct the meeting.
So, Mr. Madam Chairman, why don't I make a motion that we suspend the regular order of business, go to executive session, ask people to leave, people have to leave for executive session, have Dr. Baldassari come in, let people know we'll be coming back within half an hour.
Pat's got to step away, so is she going to be able to get back in?
Well, we'll let her know before she comes back. Does that make sense?
I'm sure, I'm sure once Dr. Baldassari gets in, he can tell us about how long he'll be, and we can indicate that upon the vote, maybe, or still upon the people vote.
I think we have to be aware that trying to go to executive session right now and asking people to leave, anyone who clicks the link will be admitted, and I'm not sure that that will work.
Dr. Baldassari. Ask somebody to please leave the meeting. You'd be doing a great service to the city if you would just allow Dr. Baldassari to enter the meeting. I have no choice but to remove somebody at random. I don't want to do that. So it looks like, is he on?
No.
Dr. Baldassari.
It would take five minutes for the conversation.
Okay, let's first get him on, then we can vote on whether or not to move to executive session.
Oh, he's on.
Just said Mike joined, is that him?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bye.
So we have our full crew here. I'm going to proceed with the agenda unless I hear something. Okay, so we're moving forward to the agenda of a budget discussion of the 2020 fiscal year. Just to frame the issue, we are facing a dire financial situation. The closing of nonessential businesses in the city and state has created a revenue issue for both city and state. There is a billion dollars in shortage of state funding, and the state budget to this day has not been passed. So we are making a budget in the world of unknown. Our funding, our usual and standard funding sources remain up in the air, undetermined at this point, even our most basic sources of funding. So our budget right now, tonight, is, continues to be built on the concept that schools will in fact reopen in September in a pre-coronavirus world. As you might know, as the public might understand, that might change dramatically, just as graduation date did. So I ask the public to keep that in mind. We are trying to do very difficult work here, and, but we will revisit if we have to in order to keep our community and children safe. We remain in constant collaboration with the city as well as the state to improve the school district, but also to be reminded of the fiscal situation that we're in. But as always, we will always focus on the best interests of our students. That being said, I will recognize Dr. Crowley for updates on, from the administration on the budget process.
Thank you.
I gotta try to share my screen. It's disabled. Sorry, Ms. Crowley, it appears that my, I'm just, as the host, you disabled my screen sharing ability.
Try it now.
Good. Can you see me? Is my screen shared now?
No.
All right, I think we're closer.
There you are. Good job.
All right. It's like a regular meeting where we have technological difficulties. All right, so obviously, this is the meat of the meeting. I'll talk through some of the things, we'll get to the budget. Before we do, and I feel like, given the pandemic, it's always important to kind of focus on the positive, and there are a lot of positive things happening in Woburn. I think, first of all, the custodians haven't stopped working since the pandemic started, and so I want to thank Dave Dunkley and his crew for maintaining our schools and starting ahead with summer work. We've been distributing food on Tuesdays and Fridays throughout, an average of 250 meals per day. We've also added endemic relief to many of our low socio-economically affected students and families for additional benefits. Our family-community liaison, Adriana Mendez Sheldon, was instrumental in that. Our school nurses have been, over the past few weeks, switched roles and have been working for the city of Woburn, doing contact tracing, and Mary Heater is our nurse leader, has been leading that charge, so I want to thank the nurses for stepping up, our school nurses, but all nurses everywhere, all medical first responders during this most difficult time. Jen Judkins is our new Ted Tech Director, new this year. I think we are so lucky to have her, as we've had to deal with remote learning on the fly. And for people listening, we do have the ability to register online now. In the past couple of years, we've been talking about essential registration as a way to make sure data is correct going in. Ms. Judkins and a team work to create online registration, which is available on our woburnpublicschools.com website. I know there are many teachers on this call, and I can't thank you enough. The survey I'm going to talk about in a little bit talked about our remote learning and thanking teachers profusely. You're juggling not only your own lives, but a learning curve with technology and caring for our kids in a way that we never could have imagined, and so I thank you for that. Our paraprofessionals, Michelle Wodomsky, has been terrific as a liaison, and I circle back to the teachers. I've had more conversations, which is not a bad thing, with Ms. Locke, Barbara Locke, President of the WTA, you know, and her support has been terrific. And our Secretary Administrative Assistant people have been outstanding as far as supporting our kids and identifying who's coming to school and tracking them down as best as possible. This includes central office administrative folks. We still are paying bills, people are coming into the Joyce every day, and Debbie Tirino, Jane O'Connor, Carrie Capener, there's a series of people that have been rotating and paying bills, so the work continues. Our elected officials, including the school committee and the city council and the mayor, I want to thank all of you for your patience in trying to get this budget put together and your support and understanding. And last but not least, I want to thank my administrative team. You'll hear from some of them tonight. You heard from Ms. Callanan and the principals, they've been, it's an amazing team, and I feel very, very fortunate to have the support of Wendy Michael, Bob Alcanada, who's new, and, you know, we're trying our best to maintain service and keep a positive attitude, and I think it's working so far. So I just want to talk, keep the highlight reel going momentarily. We're going to get to the budget, I promise. The content specialists were created last year to create PLCs and data meetings at our elementary schools. That's the wind block that we've talked about throughout the year. The curriculum coordinators have added support at middle school that never existed. At the elementary level, Courtney Young is the curriculum coordinator, who does great work. The fine and performing arts that we've invested in over the past two years is paying dividends, and it culminates really at the high school where all the schools feed to, and at the last meeting you heard, Woburn Memorial High School is named one of the best high schools, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report. So we're really, really, I'm very proud of the work that's happened in Woburn, and in putting together the budget, I'm very fearful, I'm very mindful of not going backwards and trying to protect and preserve what we already have, have and maintain as we move forward. Before I go to the budget, we did put out a survey to families last week, I believe it was Thursday or Friday, and I just wanted to share that information with everybody, as it may impact some of the decisions that people make. The survey was focused on transportation, athletics, and remote learning. The majority of this, what I'm going to talk about briefly, is transportation, athletics, and a little bit on the remote learning, not necessarily the feedback, because that's a whole nother entity on the extended learning plan. We had a pretty good mix of people that responded. We had 11, you know, 1,187 people respond to the survey, and it was very evenly distributed, which I think validates some of what the survey tells us. One of the questions, and I'm not going to read this, but state law as it relates to transportation, you know, grades K to 6, if they live less than two miles, have different rules in students in grade seven to 12, and these are things that were in the survey, and I just wanted to make people aware of it. We did do a district comparison of what other districts are doing as it relates to transportation. So for example, in Attleboro, if a student lives less than two miles away and they choose to take a bus, they get charged $190 per student, you know, and then you can see our neighbor in Winchester, it's $630 for one year. So, you know, we did do our homework as it relates to what other surrounding communities do, because I know that's a question that's often asked. This was a previous question that had been raised, I believe, by Dr. Wells, but we were wondering who would take a bus next, next fall, if in fact we open our doors, and you can see the results are pretty even, but anticipated bus users for next year, 53% said that they would take a bus. So that was the question, and here is the answer. Here's the answer on whether people would support charging bus fees. Number strongly disagree is clearly the prevailing opinion in Woburn, to not charge a bus fee, you know. That, again, I'm just reporting the data out. Athletic fees, similar, it's, we use the same layout. So Attleboro charges $200 per student per season, and it varies, again, by city or town, but you can see a lot of the cities and towns do charge athletic fees. And you can see, for example, Winchester charges $325 a sport. I know, and I, I'm very well aware, Woburn is not Winchester, and I want to make that clear. I just, I just wanted to kind of point out that we have done our research on this. And as far as support for community as it relates to athletic fees, it's a little more mixed. People are a little bit more open-minded towards the idea of it as far as athletic fees. So again, I just wanted to share that with the committee. I'm happy to share this whole presentation with the committee so you have it. You can look at it after I go through it tonight. This was the device question on the survey. So 40% of our households requested some type of a device moving forward, and the average is 1.4 devices per household. In other words, you know, if you have two or three kids or four or five kids in your house, you need more than one device, and that's obviously something that we were not prepared for when we closed our doors in March, but something that we need to think about moving forward. District-wide, this is coming out of the survey, we're hypothesizing that we would need close to 1,600 devices, the 1575, and the way we arrived at that is we took, there were 1,931 students represented in the survey, and 680 devices were requested off of the survey, which is approximately 35%. And so if we were to say we have 4,500 kids and 35% need a device, then we would arrive at 1575. Again, people are answering the survey today. If things change tomorrow, they may request more, more devices. Currently, we have 920 student devices out, which is, represents 20% of our Currently, we have 920 student devices out, which is, represents 20% of our student population. Not reflected in the budget tonight, but certainly, I believe, a cost that we need to absolutely consider is the idea of a one-to-one for increasing our technological capacity. So I asked Ms. Judkins to price this out for us. If we buy a device, a Chromebook, it costs the district $339. And so you multiply by however many devices that we need, and you arrive at your figure. The issue there is that it's a one-time purchase, and every device has a shelf life. And so in four years, you'd be looking at purchasing again in a massive amount. And so I then asked her to price out leasing. And you can see it's $14.50 more to lease. However, the per-year cost is $88.50 per year. So you can ostensibly get more devices on a lease than you can buying. But that would have to be built into an operating budget or a capital budget every year. I say all this because I was on a call today with the Commissioner and other, I've been on a lot of calls today. But with Commissioner Riley, the superintendent group. And we're still waiting on guidance from the state about what next fall will look like. And so Ms. Crowley highlighted it earlier. We put together this budget, and I feel very, it's been a challenge to do this. It's an incredible challenge to do this, because we don't know what we're planning for. All of us like to plan and know what we're doing, so we can meet the needs of our kids. What we're hearing is that we are, we were advised to start purchasing PPE equipment. And also that any guidance from the state is two and a half weeks at least away as it relates to next fall. So we're, again, planning something, knowing that it may look radically different. The budget tonight that you're going to see is a budget as if we opened our doors normally in September, which at this point, I, I'm, I have trouble believing that to be the case. And so relative to the budget, one of the things that I'm most proud of is the fact that we have a strategic plan and a vision and a blueprint for the public school system in Woburn for, to represent our kids. Our priorities are equity for all students, a rigorous curriculum, and professional practice. And over the past couple of years, we've made great investments to support our vision. And so I'm, I'm not going to read all of it, but simply, adjustment counselors at all of our schools, music and art at the elementary level, curriculum coordinators to support the middle and high school, a pre-K director, family community engagement, human resource people, part-time theater director. So that, when we did the budget, again, I, I and all of us wanted to protect to the extent possible the progress we've made to get to these positions. Because if we start eliminating some of these positions, I'd be afraid that they may never return, and our progress would be stopped. So to roll over our budget, this is what we talked about last week, is a 5.9% budget. And this is what, again, to reiterate, all is steplane contractual increase. And there were no new positions. The considerations, we still don't know, Ms. Crowley talked about it. Every time I hear from the state, the deficit goes up another billion dollars. I've heard it's up over $6 billion right now at the state level. I talked to State Representative Hagerty today, who is very supportive of the Woburn Public Schools and trying to make sure that our Chapter 70 and Circuit Breaker and everything is fully funded. But we just don't know yet, because the state has yet to pass a budget. Mayor Galvin has been great as far as extending the timeline. But the revenue to the city is a real thing as the tax base shifts. And so we're doing this with, with so many unknowns, it's really posed a challenge like no other. Yesterday, in the afternoon, we sent to the committee an adjusted FY '20 budget at 3.436%. At the last meeting, you had asked us to get to 4%, and I wanted to go lower so that people could have an idea of the choices that we had to make and allow choices to be made. We have a proposed reduction list, which I'll get to momentarily. But one of, I just want to go through the considerations, again, not, not in the budget, is any PPE equipment or technology. That I don't know what we're going to need, how much, and when. And so that poses a unique challenge. We're not filling several vacancies in the district as a cost savings measure. We're not moving forward on any of the recommended positions that, over the three years that we worked so hard to kind of get to. We don't know what sped costs are going to be as it relates to our budget in the fall, in the summer and the fall. And I mentioned this earlier, but the remote learning is a cost that we need to somehow figure out. But since we don't know what we're planning for, makes it virtually impossible. So here we go. This is the slide that, the cuts that got us down to 3.4%. And Ms. Crowley, if you could just, I'm going to call on Mr. Alea, Mr. Alcanata, Ms. Sprague, or Ms. Dr. Baldassari, at some of these.
Dr. Crowley, could I interrupt for one minute? Mike Mulrennan got kicked out of the meeting. I don't know.
And we're going to ask someone to leave the meeting, so Mike Mulrennan, a member of the school committee, can get back in. So if someone wouldn't mind leaving the meeting, it's being livestreamed on Facebook. I'm told that there is a Google link to watch the meeting.
Well, if I can add, if people go to meet.google.com and enter the code FCMEETING while they are logged into a Google account, they should be able to view as well.
It could capital S, capital C, lowercase meeting.
Yes, thank you.
So it's being livestreamed on Facebook. I don't know where. It's on Google, just as Mr. Lips just said. So I would, so Mike Mulrennan needs to come to this meeting.
Okay, he should be able to come in, this is down to 98, so I'll tell him to jump on quick.
And I am told that we will set up for a 250-capacity next meeting. Never in my wildest fantasies would I need more than 100 slots for a school committee. I am pleased about it, but next time it will be a lot smoother. Waiting for Mike Mulrennan. Appreciate everyone's patience.
He said he lost connection, but then couldn't get back in.
Okay, we'll wait. I need people to leave the meeting and maybe go to Google. So that Mike Mulrennan is able to participate in the meeting as an elected member of the school committee. I'd really appreciate it.
Andrew, can you answer that chat question with the password and stuff?
Uh, I'm sorry, which one?
On the chat, did they just ask, how do they get on there, and what was the password?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, it is meet.google.com. And the code to enter is capital S, capital C, meeting, all lowercase, all one word. I am being told it's possible that you have to be logged in using a student account. So this may only work if you are a parent of a student in the system. So if there are any parents of students in the system who are watching on Zoom, and you can go to meet.google.com, enter that code using your student's account, that would be a huge help. Thank you.
Okay, if anyone, please, participants, I'm asking you to please allow, please exit the meeting and allow Mike Mulrennan to come in. If you're just entering the meeting, I'd really appreciate it if you left and went to.
Mike just joined.
Okay, he's on.
Okay, great. So let's continue the presentation. I want to thank everybody for their patience. And I'm just all glad we're working really well together in this very important meeting. So I'm sorry, Dr. Crowley, please continue.
That's quite all right. So to get from the previous meeting to tonight, to get down to that 3.4%, these are cuts that we are articulating to the committee, choices to make. And so, for example, if you were to pay, eliminate Paris, because that's, that's obviously, 18 people in our youngest classrooms, right? So the line item there is $279,000. We're at 3.4%. So the committee has the ability to tell us to go down lower. It can also tell us to add back in. And so reduced maintenance and grounds, $230,000. Dave Dunkley and his amazing crew are going to take a wallop. I think they'll do a great job relative to keeping schools clean. It's a significant line item. It's this next one, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but the substitute line item, we're reducing by $175,000. It seems almost counterintuitive, since we don't know, we may need more subs next year. But again, we've been challenged to come up with a budget. And it's, we're trying to be, I said at the last meeting, I'll say it again, I don't, I did not, I don't want to go into classrooms. I think our priority is kids. And I tried, we all tried to reduce wherever we possibly could without affecting the day-to-day interaction with the teacher and a child. And so is, I mean, again, the committee, you've had this, you've looked at it. You may have questions for us. I'm going to come back to it. You know, there are a couple, there are RIFs in here, not, not nearly what I was afraid the number might be. But there, you know, and again, a RIF is, they're on a recall list, and if the budget improves, they come back. It's not job-related at all. And so we've, and we try to follow the guidance as it was suggested to us by the committee to share, share the pain. And so, you know, eliminate a curriculum coordinator, eliminate MCAS tutors. You know, we, we have, we've tried to distribute the cuts as, it's not even, but to a variety of different sources. And so I say that, and again, in the 3.46% budget, embedded in that, are the, this was going forward, we're going to need, if we open 211 nurses, to meet the IEP needs of two kids. The ACBA, we've talked at, we're paying, we're paying more than, more than this in our contracted services line. So that would be actually a savings. And I can't stress enough, we need to invest in our special ed department. If we don't build it up, we're going to continue to face these issues year after year. And Ms. Ryan has done an amazing job, and I have great confidence that she'll continue to do an amazing job. But she needs help, bottom line. And these were positions that we had asked for when things were a little bit rosier. We're not even talking about them now. So for example, the Goodyear needs an assistant principal desperately. A digital learning coach. Here we are, going remote. And again, Ms. Judkins has done an amazing job, but more support is needed. Mr. Nickerson talked about the needs at the Malcolm White with an adjustment counselor, and on and on. So these are positions that we're, are totally just off the board right now. We understand that. But I just wanted to draw that to the committee's attention. So again, at the, the meeting on the 14th, we were at 5.9%. And again, I appreciate the patience, because it takes, it's toll to make these amounts of cuts. It really does. This isn't fun. And so we applied the 19, or the 1.9 million dollar cuts. We applied the new positions, and we arrived at the 3.436%. And so this is what I was saying earlier. The committee certainly has the right to tell us to go lower. It also can add things back in. We will take the direction of the committee. And so for example, if you were to say, the kindergarten Paris, we want you to put them back into the budget, we go from 3.4 to 3.862. Okay, so everything has an economic impact. We can calculate. I don't, we're good, but I don't think we can do it in real time. But it will take direction from the committee on about what you want us to put back in so that we can ostensibly create a budget that represents the best that we can be in FY '21. All of the data that I pulled earlier, and I'm putting it out here, and I know it's been a longstanding tradition and a value in Woburn to not charge fees. But you can see that it, there, we have about 1,700 kids that take the bus. 65% of those ostensibly would pay predicated on their free and reduced lunch. So there's revenue that other cities and towns collect that Woburn doesn't. And the same for athletic fees. And so that may not be something the committee wants to consider, and I respect entirely the committee on this. I just wanted to put it, put it there so everyone can see it. And so at this point, I'm going back to this slide, which is the expenditure changes. And I'll probably turn it back to Ms. Crowley. I'll open it up for questions, but yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, for that very thorough presentation. And also thank you for reaching out to the public and administering the survey. It's always helpful to get the public's opinion on these important measures. So I think what we're going to do is, I'll, I'll recognize school committee members, of course, they will have questions. And then, as Dr. Wells suggested last meeting, I think we should come to some sort of consensus about what, how we want to do this. If there are committee members are in agreement on putting things back in the budget, then we could, we can vote on that. But again, there is no final vote on the budget tonight. So Ms. Chisholm.
How many total people are going to be ripped? There's, because the numbers changed from different budgets, version one through 10?
Yeah. The total number of RIFs is?
Five.
All right. And do we have, silly question, but do we have a number from the mayor that he'll accept before we start making these cuts and not need it? Or not make cuts and need to come back and do this again? Have we gotten a number at all?
Not, not a hard number.
Again, the, the idea, he's been told several times that we are doing a 4% budget. It is our budget. So whether he can direct us with a number is questionable. But we, we have been saying that it will be a 4% budget, and there's been no ask for a different number.
Yeah, we've said 4%, but I don't think city council or the mayor has agreed on that. So I just don't want to waste more time than we already have. Do we have a number on the total savings that we've had from the school? I know this bill's still out there from finance that is still left to be done. But do we have any idea what the savings will be for closing the school early this year?
Joe has that.
Yeah, well, the last number that Patty and I talked about was around 2.8 million. There are still invoices coming in. And we just got hit with a number of tuition bills for speds, for out-of-district tuitions.
Okay, so are we going to be able to, I know that the mayor said that we'd go back to the general fund, but is there something that we can put into that number? Or when will we know that number for sure? Because I mean, if we can say that we can put technology in there, or that we could put something in there, I know he doesn't like recurring expenses of salary, but some of these things, if we could prepay and get these done that he talked about prior, I mean, we have to have an answer before we can do these budgets. And I know it's all up in the air, but this is, just seems like we're spinning our wheels, and we may not. I mean, we have to have an answer before we can do these budgets, and I know it's all up in the air, but this is, just seems like we're spinning our wheels and we may not need to.
We have had discussions with the mayor about prepaying certain items, and there is no interest on his part to do that.
Really? I mean, all right, okay, so, so on the 403B that we want to pay in June and not July, that would be coming out of that money, correct?
Yes.
So if he doesn't let us do that, we have to add that back in?
Yes.
So we need to know that before we can figure out what we're doing. I mean, we can't really do that, I just. I mean, I don't know, and then like the MCAS tutoring, is that just elementary with the MCAS tutoring, or throughout the district?
Actually, it was in the middle schools, I believe.
Okay, can I just, and there was a district-wide stipend that was eliminated for $4,600, do you know what?
No, actually, what that was is there were. Two staff members that had a stipend, and then when we added the curriculum coordinator. That stipend should have been taken out, so that's all that was.
All right, okay, I just, in the lunchroom monitors that we're going to reduce by 50%, who will be covering the lunch, the cafeterias?
Well, we, we may not have lunch. Like, we don't, if.
Lunch might be in the, lunch might be in the classroom.
So the team, we cover it?
We, we don't know.
So the teachers won't get their lunch break, or separation from the kids from bell ring to bell ring?
We, we don't know.
This is, and I'm, I'm not blaming anybody, but this is why it's hard, because if we don't know, but contractually, the teachers need to get a break too from seeing their lovely little darlings. From the, the entire day, but I just. Those are things I'm having a hard time, and yeah, we can do that. And I just go with, and I'll let others make questions, because I have, I have a ton more, but, you know, going across the board and no criticism here, but. The only place that has not been affected is administrators in the business office, just saying.
And school committee, and, and if you want to be tight about it, school committee salaries.
Right, oh, I mean, I'm, I'm going to talk about our travel, but I mean. There's not one cut in administration or the business office, our reduction, just saying, okay, I'll yield to somebody else.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm, Dr. Wells.
So I had a couple of questions, if you look at the budgets summary and the number of personnel. Maybe you could just go over this a little bit, because it looks like there's about 20 additional personnel from FY, from the last FY year to the this year, could you just explain that?
Yeah, the bulk of that was, remember, there were a bunch of special ed positions that were in the grant. We moved those positions out of the grant into the regular budget and transferred out-of-district tuitions into the grant. The purpose in doing that is that if we left them in the grant, the grant had to pay 9% into their retirement fund. And we were trying to eliminate having that extra money taken out of the grant when it can be used for other purposes.
So how many additional personnel are in the budget for the, as it, as it stands now?
I think that we put. Four, four new positions in. The two nurses, the BCBA and the assistant other coordinator in special ed.
The other thing, it says if we eliminate freshman athletics, we reduce it by 77,000, but if you look on the. School summary, athletics is only reduced.
Couldn't hear you, John.
Forgot, if you look at, in our reduction list, we have athletics, reduction of freshman athletics at 77,000. But if you look at the budget school summary, there's only 32,000 reduced from athletics.
Yeah, the other 45 comes out of these, out of the coaches.
Okay, because when I looked at the coaches list down there, there weren't any coaches removed, but I guess you just, you did that in your, sort of, you didn't remove them from the list.
No, we just took them, we just took the number up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, Mr. Kissel.
All right, a couple of questions people haven't asked yet, on the curriculum coordinator, says eliminate curriculum coordinator, so singular, what department would that be from?
That's, that's, um, Brian Scaffington wants to go back to the classroom.
So we wouldn't replace that position, what is that, English?
Math.
Math.
Math. So is that something administrative, I mean, we've got.
And that's an administrative position.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand, I, I'm not disagreeing with that, my question is, we have these curriculum coordinators, so there'd be a, there'd be a hole in the math piece to that, is that correct?
Well, yes, we, the thinking is, and Wendy can jump in, you know, we create a STEM and we create a humanities. You know, we expand current capacity of our people there.
Okay, so there'd be overlap there?
We would hope so, and.
Yeah. On the library retirement, high school, is that just a difference in salary, or is that person gone and not being replaced, or?
Retired. From the high school.
Yeah, so is that person being replaced, or is that one less librarian, or is only one up there anyways?
It, it's going to be one less librarian, that, but the high school needs a librarian to comply with the accreditation, so it'll result in an involuntary transfer.
Okay. And it says, on the 18 Paris, is that all there is across the board, or is that just figuring out the 18 that aren't needed, and?
Now, the.
The number is 18, a, a lot of them are, are part-time.
And it's all kindergarten, Mr. Kissel.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean, but that's only 18 across the whole district?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
18, 18 bodies, but there, but the FTEs are a lot less.
Okay. All right. And on the sub-line item, you mentioned possibly with, with, I'm assuming people taking time off and, and the sicknesses or otherwise. You made a comment about that, so how would that work if there was two or three subs needed and there, there wasn't people, you know, the budget to fill that, how would that work? What would you do with the kids?
They'll probably end up like they did years ago in the cafeteria.
Okay. And the sped psychologist, I'm trying to find that line here real quick, I'm looking. Where are we? I lost track of it here, all right, so the sped psychologist is being eliminated as well. What would happen with that, is that something that would have to be subbed out, or we would just again be one down?
What we would do there, Mr. Kissel, is. We would restructure how we do student assessments, and. We would. We'd be looking over the services, the C grid services and the IEPs that the psychologists provide, and there would be some redistribution. Basically, reorganization of the way we do business with our psychological team.
All right, and then on the fees, you know, charging fees for various items, sports, busing, and so, parking potentially at the high school, things like that, I've been hearing. I've gotten a lot of feedback where people are more interested in, in paying those, I guess, than losing some of the other, especially to the Paris and the kindergarten and so on. I know we've had this conversation in the past, we've never voted for it, but maybe to Joe Alia, what, if we did, again, it would depend on how much we charge, but. Do we have a number that that would come to if we said, well, there's two fees for at least the buses?
I, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't work on those numbers, so I don't know.
It was on the slide.
All right, sorry.
Dr. Crowley presented that number, I believe it was 291,000. No. Maybe.
I couldn't get the slide.
Patient, I'll, I'll, I had 1,700 kids. 65% or some, I forget the exact numbers, could pay, we took the rough, like, the, the average of local towns. And we arrived, if we charged for buses, at $377,000, and for athletics, $190,000. Again, these are all, you know, guesses.
Yeah, so, yeah, obviously, we've all got our, our things we, we'd like, but kindergarten, kindergarten Paris, I've heard from a lot of parents sending emails and so on, that. That's obviously a pretty important piece, so we're looking at 279,000 there, so. Depending on what we do in the next night or two, we'll obviously have to adjust that, because I think that's an important piece, with the. Overall number, which is, you know, on the right side, I'm looking at my screen here. We can, we can kind of work this out. Just trying to read some numbers here while I'm talking, sorry, the difference of 3.8 to 3.5 and 3.5, again, to Pat Chisholm's point, we don't know what the mayor's at at this point. He hasn't really given us that number to, to work with, so. Okay, I'm just, I'm glad I got those answers, I appreciate it, and I'll talk to a few more parents and get some feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel, Mr. Lipsit.
Yes, thank you, and first, you know, thank you to the administration for all the hard work doing this, this is not an easy thing to try to put together. My, so my question is essentially, what does this, what does the bottom line number look like if we take out any cut that involves someone losing a job? Because I have to say, I am very, very uncomfortable with the idea of advancing a budget that is going to cost people jobs when we do not have a hard number to shoot for. When, if, you know, if we had a clear idea of exactly what we were facing here, if, if city hall could give us that. And, and we were really up against that wall, then unfortunately, we might have to find ourselves in a position where we, where we make the call. To, to put people out of a job, but if we do not have that, I cannot in good conscience vote to take people's jobs away, I can't do it. So I would be very interested to know what the numbers would be if we removed any, any cut that would take a job away from someone.
Are you moving?
And I know that, I, I, I don't know if you have that number on hand, but I didn't. That, that is my question, is, is, is what would our, what would our percentage be if we eliminated any cut that, that puts someone out of a job? Whether that be a kindergarten para, whether that be a sped psychologist, whether that be a teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit, perhaps you could make a motion to that effect after we finish with the questioning, Ms. Cormier.
Thank you. So there was the comment that these 18 kindergarten Paris are not all of them, how many would that leave if 18 were removed? Does anybody have that up end?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Kindergarten Paris?
Yes.
There'd be none.
Yeah.
So it is.
Yeah, I, I think I missed, I, I misunderstood the question, we have over 100 Paris in the district. 18 kindergarten Paris, so I'm, I did.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, sorry.
And can I ask what, why kindergarten Paris were chosen to be removed versus, I don't know, any other Paris in particular?
I don't.
The sped, the sped Paris are mandated for us to have in order to service students through their IEPs.
There's ratios that we have to keep, and so, you know, candidly, we did look at. We don't have a lot of Paris that are not assigned to, to us through special education.
And regarding the librarian, you said we, so, since our one librarian at the high school is retiring, we need to move someone, where would we move that from? Is there somewhere where it's not mandated that we have a librarian?
Middle schools.
We would just, just pick one?
The middle school shares their librarian, and the middle school librarian only services the sixth graders at this time?
I see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cormier, I'm not seeing any more hands raised, I just have a.
I'm sorry, actually.
Excuse me, Dr. Wells, then Mr. Lipsit, Dr. Wells first.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew, yeah, I just wanted to go back to the fees thing, because, you know, I know we've talked about it, maybe you could give some idea about, you know, the business. Would we need another person to administer collecting the fees?
I, I, I would think so, but I, that could be charged to a revolving account.
Well, but I'm, I'm just trying to get like a bottom line, how much we'd save, if we have to hire, if we have to get a person to collect the, you know, to deal with all the money coming in. You know, that's, obviously takes away from the bottom line, so I just want to make that clear, and the other thing is, did we, through the chair to Dr. Crowley. Did we take into account, let's say, you know, you, you talked about the people that would get free and reduced, but did we take into account how much, how many people don't pay? Let's say lunch bills, but are, but owe them to us, and sort of extrapolate that to buses and fees, because you have to take them.
We, we, I understand the question, we didn't go that deep into it.
Okay.
You know, I.
Okay, that's all right, yeah.
You know, my, my experience with some of these fees, as a parent that pays some of them, is a lot of it's online, so you're, you know, you, you're not writing checks or going to the bank, it's, you're paying bills online. So I don't know whether it would require an additional person, I think people's jobs may change, so that's.
You know, I just think there's a lot to, if we do go to fees, we have to look at a lot of other factors, and, you know, before we extrapolate that we're going to get this amount of money, that's the point I just want to make, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, Mr. Lipsit.
My one remaining question had to do with school committee salaries, I know this might be an unpopular thing among my colleagues. But if we are all feeling this, this pinch throughout the system, then school committee needs to feel it too. So, and, and I, I apologize, I'm new here, I don't know this exactly off the top of my head, but what is the total expenditure for school committee stipends?
Approximately.
Thousand?
Thousand.
I'm sorry, say again?
It's approximately, hold on, I'll get to the exact number, hold on.
So you have to take.
850.
Okay.
But you have to take into account that we don't control, you know, we do, we pay the Northeast folk, school committee person, their thing, and so, you know, I think that would, if we decide to do something, I'm not sure that's necessarily fair, unless she agrees.
I, I mean, should a motion be made, I'm, I'm sure we can make a carve-out there. But I, you know, I, that's not an insignificant amount of money when I'm looking at the cuts we have here, and, you know, we are all doing this as a job. If, if that's where we are, then that's where we are, so we'll, I, I mean, I, I'm going to consider making a motion to that effect when we're, when we're ready to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit, and just, I'll just throw out another idea from the chair that you could, the school committee could direct me to engage with the city council to see if there would be a citywide interest in doing something to that effect. Mr. Malrennan, I'm seeing that you have your hand up.
Yes, and hopefully you can hear me, Madam Chair, can you all hear me again?
Hello, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair, I lost connection and I was kicked out of the meeting, but a couple of quick points, yeah, that's fine, I'm back in. A couple of quick points to all the members, obviously, to the administration, thank you, thank you, thank you, I can't thank you enough for this work. I guess, right off the bat here, we don't have, we have so many unanswered questions, we, so many unknowns. Ms. Chisum, you're right, we haven't got, and others' members as well, we have no number from the mayor's office. So we're out, we're, we're, I don't know, we're, we're making decisions here, and we're not even allowing the public, because only 100 of the people are allowed to see what's going on. I know, Madam Chair, you read the order, the governor's memo that we could do this the way we're doing it, very uncomfortable doing this, people are entitled to see what's going on, I know there's no decision tonight, it's going to be a public hearing later. To my other point, what is, again, we get back to the superintendent's charts, as close, close, close to the 4%, Dr. Crowley. What actually would that entail, again, I'm sorry to make you reference back to your. Again, I'm sorry to make you reference back to your charts, but if we were right on the cusp of 4%, again, with no number from the mayor's office. And I'll have your opportunity, you can explain that after. And my other question would be, has anyone asked, either chairperson of the committee, or perhaps the superintendent, has anyone asked the mayor, I've done it each and every year faithfully, about his reserve rainy day account? And if so, how are the chances of the school board, after making such drastic measures, how are the school board accessing any of his rainy day account? That the city has bonded out, the city is in such great financial shape. These cuts are going to hurt a lot, a lot of people across this city. And to make these cuts to the littlest ones in the community, these little kids are going to be so devastated going back to school as it is, trying to understand what we've all gone through these last couple of months. Perhaps if they go back in September. The idea that they have to eat in their classroom, the teachers aren't getting a break, they're not socializing. The expense of all that is going to be astronomical to get these kids an emotional state to be in front of their teachers. But to get to my point again, Dr. Crowley, what would the closest number to 4% look like? And secondly, has anyone asked the mayor about his rainy day, I guess it's the rainy day account, the reserve account in the mayor's office? Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for your.
Well, yes, of course, I've asked the mayor about the rainy day accounts. I have frequent communications with the mayor as to how we're going to fund our budget and what is necessary, what we need. Particularly for, you know, I proposed the 5.9% budget. Dr. Crowley and I sat down with him and explained exactly what we needed, which was 5.9% to roll over the budget. And we are, you know, strong advocates for the school district. And I would just encourage the school committee to build a budget that's in the interest of the students, regardless of what the political ramifications are. So if we build a budget, we go to the city council. The city council can, in fact, add to our budget to meet the needs of our students. I'm just pointing that out. Thank you, Ms. Mallrennan.
And with that said, Madam Chair, if I may again interrupt, before Dr. Crowley gets his slides. Lots of people want to know, what can they do? What can they do? Or perhaps it's time for the public to notify the mayor's office that maybe it's his time, his turn to look into the reserve rainy day account, if feasible, if legal, and if something that he could explore for us on behalf of the school district. So I appreciate your explanation, Madam Chair. I know it's not easy. I know you guys dealing with this at a very tough time, but I think it's just a great opportunity for something like this to at least explore the options. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Mallrennan. And that's why I like when your mic works. Dr. Wells.
You know.
John, you're muted.
I understand, thank you. Yeah, no, the only issue is, you know, I understand we have to advocate for the school department, and we're doing that the best we can, but we also have to advocate for it in light of the situation. It's, you know, easy to say, go to the rainy day fund now, but we don't know if next year is going to be worse. Talking to our state rep, he's very concerned about next year's budget in the state. So, you know, I think we have, you know, we can say, you know, we need 6%, 7%, but this is not realistic this year. You know, I've been through times, 2007, we had level funding. There have been times that have been hard, and we have to reflect that in our budget, because we are a part of the city. You know, I think we do the best we can, we try to make the cuts as judiciously as possible. The administration has given us some options, and we just go through it. But to say, you know, we're going to do the rainy day fund, I think we've talked to the mayor, and the superintendent's alluded to it. We don't know what we're going to need in the fall. That may be the time when we have to go to the rainy day fund. To fund things that we don't even know we need now. So I think we just got to deal with the budget situation as it is, as it appears to be. We know it's going to be around, we're hoping, you know, if we get to four, that's fine. If we get to 3.5, it's going to be somewhere in that range, three to four. And we just got to live with it. And, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, and we just go on with it. But I think to keep talking about a larger budget, it's just spinning our wheels, because it's not realistic in this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mrs. Chisholm, did you have your hand up? And then.
I just, on the long-term sub for elementary that was cut, is that no longer, that position no longer needed? Because I would think that if we budgeted for it, we probably had a classroom that wasn't.
I think that was a class size reduction.
Okay, okay. So it's not, all right, I just, I didn't know that. And I mean, as far as all the fees and stuff, you know how I feel about that stuff. I think that the people in Woburn have been very generous to the school committee and the schools. So I hate to add a burden to people that are going to be hurting big time themselves and their families. So I just, and when we talked about this in the past, the big pushback was there was nobody to collect it, who's going to chase them down? As we have seen since, for our lunch, people don't pay, and then it becomes a roller coaster, and it's not fair. I mean, if we're going to do anything, I would support athletic fees more than I would do anything else, because, you know, the kids at the high school can get a job and pay for their fees. We need to get these kids to school. And if people don't have a way of transporting them, that's more important than fees. So I just, I think that that's kind of crazy to even think about adding it. We are not Lexington, we are not Winchester. But if you look at Waltham and you look at Wilmington, they don't have the same fees. So that's more of a town that we should be comparing ourselves to. But it's just not going to happen. And when the athletics, the freshmen, we have to make sure that we're Title IX compliant. So we're not eliminating more girls' sports than we are for the boys. We had that issue before, so we have to make sure that we are in compliance with that. And then if we do it, it's going to be everybody pays for fees or nobody pays. Because that's just the way, that's how equal opportunity acts in this city, as far as I'm concerned. I just, you know, want to make sure that that's going to be working. And the advanced credits that we cut back, is that going to be a contractual problem if teachers go and get something and we can't fill it?
No, based on the estimates of the last three years, we're comfortable with that number.
Okay, so all right, so we've had more than we, all right, that's, that's worked. So we just, so before we do anything, we have to find out if that 403B actually can be done. And then on our list, the cuts that we had made prior, there's a couple of duplicates in the new list. So I don't know if those were counted twice, or if those were just changed. The retiree was on the list from the past budget as a cut.
Right, no, it wasn't counted twice.
Well, the $718,000 cuts that we had from the last budget.
Hello.
The retiree for 47,995 is now on this new budget cut that we just got. So I just don't know if that's the same or the 718 wasn't carried forward. Because we also had late buses, so we're not doing late buses?
I'm, my screen locked up, I didn't hear a word you said.
Okay, all right, so the late buses, we had a list of cuts that we made from one of our meetings that I have.
All those were just added in, they were not counted twice.
Okay, so do we have late buses or no? Because that was on the list.
No, there were no late buses.
All right, because that was on the, the total was 718.
That budget and just added these additional cuts. So those previous, a lot of those previous cuts are still there.
Okay, but it wasn't the total 718. So something might have been saved, do you think?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't.
Have a clarification on that for tomorrow night?
Okay, yep. And then on the sped consulting, there was a $500,000 cut, but it says the CARE Act. Are we sure we're going to get that $518,000?
Yes.
Okay. Grant application, the application is, the amount is actually $532,919. The application has already been submitted. Those are entitlement funds. And so once that grant is approved, we, for what I had submitted, it will be, we will receive it.
Okay.
It's not a competitive grant. That's, it's the same as our special education, 240, 262, Title I, Title II, Title III, and so on.
Okay, so, but it has been approved, so we know.
It's been submitted for FY '21. Though, we have to complete a standard contract form for the new grants. And Dr. Crowley signed that form yesterday. They won't authorize our grants until they receive original signatures on the new standard contract. So that was signed by Dr. Crowley and our new authorized signatory, Mr. Elkanada, yesterday.
Okay, so as long as we can be sure that we have that, I just don't want to be a half a million dollar shot.
Yeah, but I just want to point out that of the 532,000, we are required to give a portion of that to St. Charles in what's called proportionate share spending. So I believe that they'll be receiving something in the neighborhood of $19,000 of that, or so thereabouts.
Okay, so maybe that's where the 519 came from, that we got.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, the total grant is 532. But, but I had to consult with their principal for how they will spend their share.
Okay, all right, because I just want to make sure. And just to kind of give a heads up, do we ever, we never figured out the coaches' salaries for the spring? So.
It's in negotiation.
Okay, all right. Because I just want to make sure that we let the fall coaches know the same thing, that there will be no payment unless we actually play the sports. Because I just don't want that to be an issue going forward. Okay, I just, and we still have conferences and stuff budgeted. Maybe that's something we can look at to try to cut down on that. I know that lots, some of them are contractual that say that they can go, but maybe that's something we can look at also. Okay. I'm good.
Anyone else have any more questions for the administration on the budget?
All right, Madam Chair, if I could get back to Dr. Crowley's slide on what the, I thought he had a 3.8 or 3.9 something slide. If you could refer back to that slide possibly. Sorry, Dr. Crowley.
Certainly.
Matt, you're muted.
There we go. Is that better? I think what Mr. Mallrennan's alluding to is, if we were to add the kindergarten pares back into the budget, we get a 3.862%.
Okay, that's fine, Dr. Crowley, because again, without a number from the mayor.
Right.
We talked around 4%. And yes, I agree with Dr. Wells. I was here when they said level fund. Level fund what, Mr. Mayor? We will level, but we need a number from the mayor's office. We also need an answer from someone about the slash rainy day account to move forward further with this budget. I'm sorry, but that's my thoughts on this. Thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification.
And if I may, I'm going to try to answer Mr. Lipsit's question earlier relative to if we were to add people back in. I don't like doing it in real time, but the estimate that I'm getting is about 4.1% if we added all the people back into the budget. But we'll have that for you tomorrow if that's what you want us to do.
Thank you.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions. So the mayor saw this list of potential cuts, right?
Yes.
And there was no objection to the use of the 401-3B to pay it in June versus July? There was no, there was no objection to that?
I talked to him this morning and I sent it to him. I haven't talked to him since.
Okay. And what is the, what are the chances that there is actually going to be contact athletics? Like, do we know? I mean, I'm just kind of picturing football and freshman sports. Do you think there's going to be sports?
The commissioner did say today that there are certain sports that, like golf, where social distancing is totally possible. But in football, there will be questions, but we don't know.
And does this mean that freshmen are not allowed to play sports? Or is this just, can you elaborate on that, administration?
Freshmen can try out for any sport. It's just that there are teams that are designated specifically for freshmen. So we have freshmen that are on varsity. The girls' hockey team, who are state champions, were led by freshmen this year. So that's.
Thank you. So just the kindergarten pares, I'm picturing children being out of school for so long and coming back into a, not even the school district, perhaps even a new school. And what is the administration's belief about how that would impact the kindergarteners? If they didn't have an extra pair of hands in the classroom?
I, I mean, I think they're vital to the success of the classroom. These are our youngest kids who need the most support. None of these are easy things, you know, why do we pick them? Because, you know, like, we have to, we had to make tough choices, so I don't like any of it. And I'm sorry to react a little strongly, it's just, I think that, you know, well, kindergarten pares are necessary to running a school. So are lunch monitors, so are, you know, everybody is. Again, we just don't know what school's going to look like in September.
And do some of these kindergarten pares provide language access to at times?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to, you know, opinionate from the chair, so that concludes my questions. Any action?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm sorry, I had your hand raised, didn't I?
I'm sorry.
I think I raised my hand, I'm sorry, back to the phone here. I understand the dialogue tonight and the discussion's been around athletic fees and bus fees. Again, someone has been on this board for a while and seeing around other districts. Has any discussion been on what they call an activity fee? Band and other activities that the students are involved in. Again, kudos to the Woburn School District. We have some phenomenal band arts programs in our district that, again, are getting accolades all over the state. But yet, we sit here tonight deciding on things like this. So I didn't know if bus fees, athletic fees, or we're just going to call it an activities fee. And again, to Joe's, well, Mr. Ali is leaving us, but it's someone's responsibility to get all that and collect those items. I just wanted to make sure that, get some clarification for the next discussion session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I make a recommendation, we go through the list and see if there's things we can agree on.
Thank you. Okay, let's go through the list and see if there's things that we can agree on.
Madam Chairman, can I just have one clarification on the?
Of course, Ms. Chisholm, I'm sorry.
The pares. I know they're kindergarten pares, but some of them have been with us since the kindergarten pares started. Is there a bumping as far as with the sped pares? Would they be able to cross over? I know they were part-time, but could they take a position and do that if they wanted to? Because I know some of these people just, I know that this is something that they depend on. Is that, is that something they can do? I know they're different jobs, but they're both pares. Could they bump someone from special ed?
I don't have, I'd have to look at the contract, Ms. Chisholm.
All right. I just, I just didn't know if that could be.
I mean, I understand the question, but, right, right. We follow the contract.
Okay.
Okay, so let's try to build a consensus. Perhaps there are low-hanging fruit for us to agree on. For instance, the moving of the 401-3B.
We approve the pay 403B in June rather than July.
Second.
And on the motion, can we please, as long as we get clarification that legally we can do that?
We can do, I, Madam Chairman.
Legally, legally you can do it.
Right, that's what I'm going to say. Legally, we, you know, this is something I would go to the mat for. You know, there's talk about the mayor stopping our expenditures. I think we're in.
I just want to make.
But there's been a lot of talk about that. And I just want to make it clear that, you know, my understanding of the law is the school committee is the final authority on spending its budget. And I think, you know, if push came to shove, I think we have a good legal case on that, and I don't think.
I just want to make sure no one is agreed not to, that's all. Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. So it appears that we're getting closer. So we have a motion on the floor to pay the 401-3B in June versus July, so it's in fiscal year '20. Any discussion, further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Ms. Kessel.
Yes.
Lipsit.
Yes.
Mallrennan.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that motion passes seven to zero, and we added 300 something thousand back into the fiscal year '21 budget.
Will we reduce maintenance and grounds by 230,000?
Thank you. Motion, second, I mean, sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the recommendation on the maintenance and grounds.
On the motion?
Yes, Ms. Cormier.
I'm sorry, I don't, was this specifically, what would this entail? Like, this wouldn't be cutting any persons, but what would, where would that money?
It's coming out of, it will be coming out of maintenance supplies and custodial supplies. And there was a potential to, a new truck to replace a plow that was on its last legs. So those are the, those are the main areas. No people, doesn't involve any person. Doesn't involve any person.
Very good.
On that motion.
Yes, Mr. Lipsit.
To what extent do the, the existing budget have in its maintenance, any kind of cleaning supplies related to COVID-19?
Not at this point in time, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moren, is your hand raised on the motion?
Yeah, it was, Madam Chair, I just wanted to kind of elaborate on Mr. Lipsit's question. Here we are, again, Joel, thank you for your explanation. So we're gonna cut a line on them and sending kids back to what we hope is a cleaning school, although we don't have cleaning materials. I just wanted to make a clarification on that, so.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I don't think the administration's proposing they have no cleaning materials, so I think that's kind of an extravagant statement. You know, they're taking some of their supplies, I understand that, but I think there are cleaning supplies. I would hope that they wouldn't produce, they wouldn't recommend a cut of 230,000 and have no cleaning supplies whatsoever.
Thank you for the chainsaws and stuff.
The big thing next year is gonna be the requirement for what we have to do.
Right. And that's gonna be the thing.
There'll be cleaning supplies, there'll be cleaning.
And that'll be the thing, when we need that, that's when we go to the mayor for the rainy day fund.
And I, I will just add in a piece of information that the city does have CARES Act funding for one-time capital situations. So there, there could be some negotiations if, for instance, we needed to make sure the schools are sanitized. That could, for, that could potentially be a CARES Act request from us.
All right, Madam Chair, my understanding is that the mayor is okay with using savings from this year for capital expenditures next year as well?
I don't want to put words in the mayor's mouth, but that has come up in conversation. It seems to be more in line with one-time capital expenditures versus an ongoing expense. And so I do.
Cleaning supplies might fit under that umbrella as well.
Right, yeah, okay. So we have a motion to approve the suggested savings of grounds and maintenance. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I think we're ready. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Ms. Moren.
No.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, so that motion passes six to one with Mr. Moren in nay.
I'll make a motion to reduce high school reductions non-salary 96861.
Can we just talk about that for a minute, please?
Do we know what that is?
Yeah, Joe, can you, Joe, Bob, can you?
Yep, let me give you the breakdown of that. The, I, those high school reductions are in two main areas. One in 11,900 in office supplies, 80,000 in testing, which, that was the issue that came up last year. 1,000, we would have to, for the AP testing, we would have to charge for AP testing. And then there's about a little under $5,000 that's scattered in different instructional lines.
Okay, so that's a change in, in our policy on charging for AP tests. I think that requires more thought.
We can't do it.
That's not, that's not, says we can't do it, so we gotta think about it. But, you know, there's lots of things we don't want to do.
Okay, so that, just, if you want to go forward with your motion, of course, Dr. Wells, you may.
No, no, this is not supposed to be a contention, I'm trying to go through the ones and trying to pick ones that I think there's unanimity on, or at least close to unanimity. Let's see.
Long-term sub.
High school library retirement, I know Mr. Lipsit talked about eliminating positions, but that would be a position that wasn't. You know, we're not getting rid of somebody's job, we're just not filling it, so I don't know if that one.
Well, is.
I think there was a question, or was that a motion?
I think there was an explanation for Mr. Aliyah on the, on the motion.
Great.
No, I, no, nothing, no.
Well, I guess my question to you, Joel, would be, is that a fair statement by Dr. Wells? That it's just this person would be not replaced come September, correct? Just to retire.
There would be, as Dr. Crowley said, there'd be an involuntary transfer to fill the positions.
I see.
To fill the position.
So someone would still be.
Librarian at the high school.
I see, okay, thank you. But there's a savings there if that person is not replaced fully.
The position that the person would come from wouldn't be replaced.
Thank you, Joel.
I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I have, I have a motion on that line item? I'm not, it's not a line item, I have a motion on that item?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yeah.
Yes. In a second.
Second, yep.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
I'd just like to say that I'm, I'm very uncomfortable reducing librarian staff in the slightest. I mean, we should have a full-time librarian in every single one of our schools, and that should be a non-negotiable thing. I understand that we don't, and I understand that right now we can't. But I'm, I'm, I'm simply uncomfortable with, with reducing the library staff at this point, especially at the middle schools, where we know that we need, we need some work to be done. That's my sense.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Is there any further clarification on that, Dr. Crowley?
Madam Chair.
Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Crowley.
One second, Ms. Moren.
Thank you.
Again, none of these are easy. The question asked to the principals, some of these come directly from the principals. And what, what can you do without to run your school? The librarian at the middle schools is shared, there's only, there's one librarian at both schools, just to be clear. There's not one at each of the middle schools. The same person that goes back and forth. And so that's just as a clarification.
And, and, you know, my, my comment should not be read to say that, that anyone is excited about getting rid of librarians, or, and no one's getting rid of librarian, but, but reducing that staff level. And I understand we're in, we're in an impossible situation, and if that's what the principals believe that they can do without, then that is, I think, something that people need to take into account. But, you know, if, if we're talking about trying to keep our, our cuts away from kids, to me, a librarian is, is a very direct contact point for kids. And I understand people are gonna have a different view on this one, but, but I, that's, that's far down my list.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Is there any clarification for the committee, whether or not it will actually reduce library classes or library services?
The middle school librarian only services the sixth grade classroom. My understanding from the middle school principals, that the SRO can take over that and do his classes in that schedule.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kissel.
Are we still on the librarian at this point, or are we voting on that?
Yeah, we're still on the librarian.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the next one as well. I'm good.
Move the motion.
We're on a motion.
Move the motion.
If I could, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I do recall, I do recall during the sessions last year, we did have some representation in there. And the upcoming partnership with the Woburn Public Library is working out very well. So I know the administration's taking lots of notes tonight. So again, if we could just kind of strengthen that partnership with the Woburn Public Schools to help our library program with the kids. And I guess I'll be in favor of it, if this is one of the suggestions from the principals, again, what can you do without? It's an awful, awful suggestion, but I just wanted to see that we can also reinforce what we have going on with the partnership with the public library, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moren. Okay, I think we're ready. All in favor?
Yes. Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Yeah.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
No.
Sorry, Mr. Kissel, sorry.
That's right, yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
No.
Mr. Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes six to one.
How about the eliminate the elementary long-term sub? I think we had some discussion upon that, I don't know if we want to have some more discussion, but it sounded like it was something that was being eliminated because it was utilized in one of the classrooms and it wasn't needed, or, I don't know.
Wendy, that, that's a class size, am I correct, Wendy?
Yes.
The class moving up has got less students.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to eliminate the elementary long-term sub 55634.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to deal with that item, and I believe clarification, this is not a reduction. This is a staffing change due to enrollment, is that right?
Yes, and understand it was a long-term sub, it was a one-year hire.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on that motion?
Yep, what school was that at?
The Reeves.
Okay, so will it maximize a classroom, or?
Will it maximize it, what do you, what do you mean?
Well, I just don't want, all of a sudden, come August, we're gonna have to bring back a teacher. Because if we thought we needed it, I don't understand how we, all of a sudden, don't.
There will be 15 open seats in their grade.
All right.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, I think we're ready. All in favor?
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Philipset.
Yes.
Mr. Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove the retiree line item of 47995.
Second.
I think this is a holdover from, from a long time ago, when the school department had to pay a pension thing, is that right, Joe?
Yes, yep, that, there was, that, he was the final individual, and he just passed away.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, I think.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Philipset.
Yes.
Mr. Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes seven to zero, that savings is now added into the fiscal year '21 budget.
We look at the curriculum coordinator?
No, we haven't got that far.
Yeah, we're past it.
I skipped over that, because I thought it would be controversial.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask the question.
What about the kindergarten pairs, do I have any action on that?
No.
Well, I think, do you want me to just try to pull the easy one, easier ones than the harder ones, so?
Keep going, yep.
Yeah, so sorry about that. About, I'll make a motion to reduce the advanced credits by 20,000.
Second.
I think that was discussed already.
Yes, second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Do we need a roll call once again?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm. Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Philipset.
Yes.
Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes, that motion passes seven to zero. 25,000 added back into fiscal year '21.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reduce the sped paraprofessional retirement 1707.
Second.
Okay.
We have an explanation on the motion, we have another explanation again.
Paraprofessional retired, and so we budget at a lower, lower step when they come in.
Great, thank you, Joel, appreciate it. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Everyone understand? Okay.
Yep.
All in favor? Ms. Chisholm.
Roll call.
Cormier. Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Mrs. Crowley. Yes.
Okay, motion to modify sped teacher step 8,319.
That motion passed, by the way.
Second on that, John.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Mrs. Chisholm.
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Philipset.
Yes.
Moren.
No.
Chair votes yes, that motion passes six to one.
I vote yes also. Make a motion.
For the record, Dr. Wells voted yes.
Yeah, district-wide stipends eliminated, $4,602.
Second.
Oh, is that amount, Dr. Wells, I'm sorry?
$1,602.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Can I have clarification on that for the committee, please?
Yeah, we, because we have a curriculum coordinator in finance, there were two people that had a stipend, that it's not necessary to have that because you have the curriculum coordinator. So those stipends will go away. It'd be similar to like having an assistant principal at a school and no longer needing the, building a system.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Just one question or clarification, anything that needs, I assume that that isn't anything that needs to be negotiated?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes. Yes.
Moren.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let me just explain that. Three paraprofessionals that were budgeted at a P2, and they should have been budgeted as a P1. These are vacant positions, these are not positions that are filled by anybody at this point. That's due to adjust it down to the P1 salary table. Paraprofessional one, you should say.
Do we even need to vote on that, or?
Yeah, because we changed it.
Okay, great. Our motion to adjust the steps and not really people, just adjustments.
Right.
Okay, I have a second, Mr. Chisholm, you seconding?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Kissel.
Yes.
Philipset.
Yes.
Moren.
Yes, I, clarification, no contract negotiation, nothing like, no talks in that area, Joel.
No.
Okay, thank, yeah, I vote yes, Dr. Crowley.
Thank you. Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, modified paraprofessional step out to best of $551.
It's, it, that's the same thing, John.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Yeah, and then the rounding differential.
Roll call.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier losing it.
Yes.
Mr. Kissel.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit.
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Wells.
Yes.
Crowley.
Yes.
And then the rounding differential of $400.
Motion passes.
Yeah, that one, I think you could take that one out, I don't think that necessarily needs a vote.
No, that doesn't need a vote.
Right, and then sped consulting line item, I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I'll make a motion just so we can find out.
Yeah, that was an adjustment that we had to make going the other way, that had to be added back in.
Okay.
That was the, remember, we initially, John, we had 518,000 coming out of the consulting line, and it was dropped to 500.
So that's adding.
Yeah, that's adding it back.
Okay, all right, so that probably cut out of.
Back by the cares, correct?
I'm sorry?
And does it all be put back by cares?
No, no. This is adding to the budget. This eighteen thousand, this is actually an adding to the budget.
This was, when we initially got the number of five eighteen, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, we didn't realize that, I believe it was St. Charles needed to get some of that money.
But the actual number was five thirty-two nine-one-nine.
And then, initially, the first number we talked about was five eighteen.
That is correct.
So.
So do we need to do this then? Because if we're actually getting five thirty-two, we don't need to put back eighteen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
Can I, I just have to go back to the slide if you just give me one second. Eighteen thousand, is the eighteen thousand, just to clarify, clarifying question, Joe? Is the eighteen thousand money that was going back being taken from the consulting line because of the BCBA?
No.
Okay, just checking. Sorry.
No. No. Initially, when we put the budget together, we had taken five hundred and eighteen thousand out of the consulting line. Then we had a conversation and we said, oh, some of that money might have to go to St. Charles. And we put, we said that we took eighteen thousand out of that number. So we're putting it back in the consulting line.
But we're actually getting five thirty-two. We might not need to put that eighteen back.
Possibly, yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I don't know how much St. Charles gets, so.
I'm just trying to figure out where we are at a budget. I'm just trying to use the numbers we gave. So, does the administration want that added back in or not at this time?
Well, I think so that we can balance out for right now, I mean.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to add the eighteen thousand back in.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion?
So when will we, we won't know what we get for this care thing because?
Well, I think Mike said we're gonna get five thirty-two.
It's entitlement funds. We are guaranteed the funds. The only thing, there's nothing more that we need to do other than wait for their arrival.
Right. But I think those have already been designated, right, in your budget plans?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So it doesn't, so that's what I'm saying, Pat. We gotta add this back in, otherwise, you know, it's not fitting with their current budget plans.
Alright.
You know, if we want, you know, eighteen thousand's.
If you want to table it tomorrow night, we can table it for tomorrow night with more information.
Well, there's not gonna be any more information.
Administrative at this point.
I don't think, just so we can be on the same page, I'd just like to clarify everything so that the administration can work with the budget they're proposing. If they come back tomorrow and say, no, we don't need it, then we'll take it out. But right now, I'm just kinda going through the list they presented to us, agreeing on those things.
No, I deeply appreciate that, Dr. Wells. I understand completely what you're doing. Thank you.
So I just, I'll make the motion, the committee can decide what they wanna do.
Okay.
I seconded it already.
Two thousand, okay.
Okay, that motion's already been seconded, and it's to add the eighteen thousand back in based on the administration's recommendation. Any more discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Yes, I guess.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Lipsit?
Yes.
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Yes.
And so just for my clarification, the two hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars for the FY twenty-one new positions are already in the budget?
Three point four percent.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we don't have to do anything with those. We can, okay. So, we can go back to some of the more challenging ones. For purposes of discussions, I'll make a motion to eliminate eighteen kindergarten paraprofessionals at two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars.
Okay, that motion is on the floor. Any seconds? Discussion only. Seeing none. Okay, that motion fails.
Alright, I'll make a motion to...
Do I have another motion for having them back in?
I'll make a motion to add them back in.
Okay, have a motion on the floor to add kindergarten powers back into the budget.
Add in, yep.
Okay. So we have a motion to add the powers to fund the kindergarten powers fiscal year twenty-one. Not a final vote. Any discussion on that motion?
So I have, just have one question, you know, before we add big numbers in, I don't know, what's the plan of the committee? What's the will of the committee? Are they going to try to stay within four? Are they just gonna, you know, add all these things back in? What number was the committee thinking about? I just, I'm just interested to see sort of the will of other members. What are they thinking about?
So perhaps, on the motion, people could also comment on why they're adding the kindergarten powers and how they see the budget overall. Okay. So we have a motion. Any discussion on funding the kindergarten powers?
This, if I may, I mean, this to me is the most critical thing on this entire list. I can't imagine how a kindergarten functions without these powers, especially in the situation that our children are going to find when they're coming to school next year. We don't know what circumstances that will be. We don't know when it will be. We don't know the changes that they will have to experience. We don't know what they will have to wear. We don't know a billion different things. And we need as much support in those rooms through the chair, Dr. Wells, in terms of what our intentions are. If we don't have a number to shoot for, I understand that we need to, to trim. And I think we're doing our due diligence there. We are, we are going through this list and we have trimmed a lot of things that a lot of people feel have value. But I don't think that that responsibility without a clear mandate and without a clear number that we have to shoot for should include taking people's jobs away, especially not people who are caring for our youngest or our most vulnerable students.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Mr. Kissel, are you raising your hand?
No, I don't think so. Is it up there?
Mike, I think, Mike, I think.
Yeah, I just, again, referencing back to the administration, I know we had dialogue from Dr. Crowley, where input from administrators or principals. Where, where was this Dr. Crowley, as we, you know, we're talking, these are the kindergarten guys, you know? Where, where did that fall with your team leadership?
None of this was popular, candidly. And so, it was, it was probably the least favorite item to put on this list, but we do it because we need to reflect the conversations that we had and the reality that we faced. I said it earlier, I, I think Mr. Lipsit said it better than I did. Our youngest are most vulnerable. We don't know what they're gonna be coming into, so. It was, these are all tough, yeah, put out there. So that's, but it's for discussion and hopefully take your direction.
Alright, thank you again, Dr. Crowley. Appreciate it. I'm all set, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms.
Sorry, Dr. Crowley, I didn't need to steal your thunder.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? No, seeing none. All in favor?
Ms. Chisholm?
We're gonna, this is to add it back in.
Yes.
Yes.
Clarification, this is to fund the kindergarten powers in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Again, clarification.
Yep.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Morenne?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Favor.
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes. That motion passes.
I'll make a motion, and I, I don't, I, I think I, I think I skipped over this one, but if I didn't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dr. Wells, I, I'm, I'm sorry, you're on a roll, but Dr. Crowley provided us with a budget number that we would reach if we added back in, funded the powers, and I believe it's three point eight-six-five. So I just want everybody to know that we're still under four percent. We're funding the powers and Dr. Wells is on a roll. Go ahead.
Reduce substitute line item. Did I do that one already?
No.
I don't, okay, I'll make a motion to reduce the substitute line item by hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, reducing the substitute line item.
I'll, I'll second that for just discussion for a minute.
Okay, Ms. Chisholm, any discussion on that motion? Did you want to speak on it, Ms. Chisholm?
Yes, I just, doing the balance of accounts that we just did up until like mid-February, we were at seventy percent paid, used on that amount, just to let us know how shot will be next year, but it's something that we may have to do, but I hate to see kids in a gymnasium or cafeteria, but I'd rather have that done for a day than have a classroom without a teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm. Any discussion on the reduction in the substitute line item? Mr. Kissel, are you waving your hand?
Yes, I just, I couldn't get the emoji. So what is our, the line item, we're reducing it, but what, what's the total normally?
Well, the budget originally was six seventy-five, so bring it down to five hundred thousand.
Okay. And again, we, it started like, again, that the groups are gonna potentially, depending on how many people are out in a certain school, congregate in a cafeteria, gymnasium, or something like that. We're not even sure what the, what's gonna be happening with groups and settings and trying to keep people away from each other by having lunch in the classrooms and things like that, so. I, I'm not gonna be in favor of this one myself either, so.
I had a question to the administration. Did you, as your position, not fill teachers' absences?
We've had situations where we couldn't get substitutes, yes, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Mr. Lipsit?
Yes. How would this be dealt with exactly? I mean, are we just simply talking about maintaining current costs? And when it runs out, it runs out? Are we talking about reducing our hourly rate, if that's possible? Are we talking about any other mitigations or remedies there? I mean, you know, working in a high school, I know this happens on a fairly regular basis anyway. It's oftentimes on days where it can be very disruptive. And it's, you know, when we also think about the unique circumstances in which we're going back to school and the dangers potentially of gathering large groups of students in a cafeteria simply because we don't have the coverage, that's, that's where I start to worry. So that was a lot, but there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Any more discussion on that motion of reducing the substitute line item? I just have a question, clarification for the administration. Any chance if the, if there's sick time afforded for COVID? Any changes? To work?
I don't think so.
The funding is already allocated to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not interested in our CARES Act.
Again.
In the city CARES Act to see if it could be, could be something, if it's related to protecting our workforce from, from illnesses.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Crowley, it's the second time I've done that.
Okay, never mind. Alright, I think.
I, I'm sorry, I, I sort of steamrolled over my own question. But how does the adminis, so what, what would the plan be if we did reduce it? Are we going to reduce our hourly rate for substitutes? Is there a different plan in mind?
We pay a daily rate, not hourly. And so that's, just as a clarification there. One of the things we do, I mean, every day we have buildings that are uncovered. We've had substitute issues for a long time. And sometimes powers will cover and they get an increase in pay for the day. At the secondary level, Mr. Lipsit, you talked about it, you know, sometime, and Mr. Elliott said it earlier. Kids go to cafeteria. I think we need to be creative in our thinking. I, I don't have a plan totally, because we don't know what we're planning for. What, what I can tell you is what I think about is if kids have Chromebooks and there's teachers absent, ostensibly, they, they work can get done academically in a way, like, nothing replaces a teacher in the, in front of a kid, including a substitute, right? So. That's the thinking.
But, but you're not anticipating any change to the daily rate?
No.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize, I took a couple of trouble to get the question in there.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
No.
Mr. Lipsit?
No.
Mr. Morenne?
No.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
I'm voting no. That motion fails three to four.
Motion to transfer to Title One slash non-renewals, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Could you explain that one? If we get a second?
A second.
Okay, for discussion. And I just want to clarify, in the last motion, school committee did not cut the, this motion did not pass. We did not cut the substitute line item, but I assume it's going to be discussed further. Okay, I'm sorry. Your motion was, Dr. Wells, can you please repeat it?
To transfer to Title One slash non-renewal, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to the reduction. So, could the administration explain that?
Okay, and we have a second, and now we're just, we're gonna divert to administration for an explanation for the committee.
Ms. Frigg and Dr. Baldassarre, can you speak to this specifically, please?
So there's currently two teachers that were hired after the start of the school year because of the increase in enrollment. One was October. I think actually the, the two that are in Title One were both in October. And we got approval from the state to use Title One funds because both of those teachers are in Title One schools.
Books on, books on.
And because they're first-year teachers, those are two of the teachers that were either RIF or non-renewed, and the idea is that we can take two teachers out of the budget from the Title One schools and plug them into the Title One grant.
So I don't need to say anything.
So the people will still be here that just be paid from another sources?
Well, two teachers will be gone.
It's, it's just a transfer. Different teachers will be charged to the Title One grant with approval from Eleanor Rounds Bloom. Because the, the way we're using the funds is, it, it's okay to do, but.
Okay, but there's no, I guess the big thing is there's no loss of staff in this? Is that correct? Or just for clarification?
Two people will be eliminated, yes.
Two people will be eliminated, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Alright.
So it impacts five people. Three people moved to Title One, two people, non-renewed.
Their, their jobs don't change, just the funding source for their salary does.
But for two people, their jobs change.
They're, yes.
I'm sorry, can I, can I have a clarification? Because the budget seems to suggest it's two people who were transferred to Title One and three non-renewals. Is that correct?
I probably misspoke. I didn't have it in front of me.
Okay.
It does say three non-renewals.
Yeah.
Okay.
Non-renewal is different. Keep in mind that non-renewal's different from a RIF?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Can I offer an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to amend that we approve the transfers to Title One, but not the non-renewals.
Okay, amended motion is on the, on the.
No, not a second yet, Madam Chairman. You gotta get a second.
I said it was, okay, yeah. Do I have a second on that amended motion?
I will second the amendment.
Okay, so we have a, a motion to approve half of the proposal in the item.
No, no, Madam Chairman. You vote on the amendment first.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wells. I appreciate that. Can I have a roll call vote on just the amendment only, on the aspect of amending that motion?
That would just be the not, the two transfers.
Yes.
Just a transfer, roll call vote? Is that, is that what I'm doing right now?
Yeah.
You are doing a roll call vote, yes.
Ms. Chisholm?
No.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Lipsit?
Yes.
Morenne?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
No.
Ms. Crowley?
No. That motion passes four to three. Okay, so.
The amendment.
So just to clarify, the, the funding for the non-renewals will remain in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're putting back people we didn't need.
But the, but what, what we're saying is that the funding is, is there, the non-renewals may.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reduce freshman, eliminate freshman athletics, seventy-seven thousand.
Any second on that motion? Seeing none, that motion fails.
Okay. Our reduced lunch monitors by fifty percent, seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two.
I cannot act on that motion. I will pass the chair over to Ms. Morenne for, to take that vote.
Motion, again, Dr. Wells.
Reduced lunch monitors by fifty percent, seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Motion on the table from Dr. Wells. Roll call, Dr. Crowley.
We gotta have a second, I don't know.
Um, wait on a second, exactly, sorry, Dr. Wells. Is there a second on Dr. Wells's motion for the lunch monitors, please? Stand by. Uh, no second on that. Dr. Wells, motion fails. Crowley, you may be turning as chairperson. Are you back?
Ellen, come on back. I'm coming.
Alright, I'll make a motion to reduce curricular development by seventy-five thousand.
I'll second it. All right, for discussion purposes, that motion has been seconded. On the floor is the reduction of curriculum development by 75,000.
And I think that was discussed in the general discussion. That was the math curriculum coordinator?
No. No, that's the coordinator.
This is the development.
Do you have an explanation of this one?
Yeah, thank you.
This is the curriculum coordinator?
Curriculum development, I see, I see. I jumped one, yep.
Wendy.
It's, yeah, it's the funding that is allocated to the curriculum department.
Okay.
What was that?
So it's just the, it's the funding, $75,000 from curriculum development funding.
It's not a person.
Right, yeah, sorry.
What will be eliminated? I mean, what's not going to happen?
I can't predict the future, but I know currently that the money that we use funds many of the programs. The money left will fund things like STEM scopes and drawing a blank. STEM scopes, Newzella, yeah, a lot of the, the online programs that we use.
So those will be there still?
Those will be there and the new writing program that we are starting. We, because of the training that we had planned for this year, we've already purchased those materials out of this year's budget. So that material is there, so that will still move forward. The new math program that I believe Brian Scaffington talked about during one of our subcommittee meetings, that will continue as that is a pilot for this school year for the upper grades.
Can I have a clarification from the administration? What's the budget for curriculum development?
What is it now? What will it be?
Well, either way, if you tell me what it is now, I can figure out if you subtract 75,000.
It's 150.
150, okay, so it's half.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Frigg, can I ask, I mean, what anticipated needs do you see, given potential changes in curriculum delivery next year as we think about potentially more online learning and things like that? And would these, and would these funds impact that in any way?
I, I don't know that I can answer that question. It's one of those unknowns. I know through a parent survey that we did, there were concerns by many parents about the online screen time. So it's not a matter of purchasing more online tools that folks can use. It's more, we need to move forward as a group, talking with teachers, parents, and administrators to see what we're going to do. I can't anticipate what that may be.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion?
Real quick, just one, I mean, basically, we're at 150 in that department. And they're using it for things that we've, how long is that, the curriculum coordinator's been in progress? It's been two?
Second, yeah, but this, the 75,000 is not affecting the personnel. It's only for materials that we may purchase. At this time, there's not a plan for a huge jump in purchasing more materials. So I anticipate that the $75,000 should be adequate for us to move through next year.
Okay, and this has been talked over with the whole, all the coordinators?
I have had discussions with them, yes.
Okay.
It also will impact professional development.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Morennon.
This was seconded, correct?
Yes.
Just clarification again, I guess to Ms. Frigg, all the administration, again, we're, we're asking these people to do more with less. I'm supposing you're going to need to get very, very creative with your curriculum coordinator people and development next year? Or it just seems very difficult to move forward with less?
Again, I think that we will be fine. While this is the money that's within my curriculum budget, the curriculum coordinators at the middle and high school level have money available to them to use within their departments through the schools. So it's, you know, it is $75,000 for my department as a whole. But I think that it will be adequate funding for us to move forward and get the things done we need to have done. The professional development has already started for our writing program. There's not an excessive cost that that's going to have to continue through next year. We're going to handle a lot of that in-house. So I'm, again, I'm not concerned about that budget at this time.
Well, I appreciate that, Ms. Frigg, and appreciate all the work down there the curriculum people are doing. And hopefully, we can, we can make do with what you're going to get, I guess. Thank you again for clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Morennon. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Kissel, did you have your hand up?
No, I don't think so.
All right, so it sounds like that that was a, a cut made to central office curriculum, but there still is going to be means for.
Not yet.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
No.
Mr. Lipsit?
No.
Mr. Morennon?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
No. That motion passes four to three.
All right, next one up is a RIF of a special education department psychologist. I'll make a motion and I have a question about that.
Okay, can you just clarify what your motion is? Is to add the personnel back in or to make?
Make the RIF.
Okay.
And the question, and I had a question, so, to the administration. So I assume what would happen is we'd have to pay out services for this individual's, what this individual's doing.
No.
No?
No, the, the services would be redistributed to the existing psychological team.
Okay, so we have a motion to allow the RIF of the school psychologist. Any second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Kissel?
On that, I know a little while back, I thought there was some contract numbers that we needed to meet with different special ed and so on, psychologists, we were trying to meet, I should say, 450. I don't remember the exact scenario, but can someone explain that to me, how this, what the numbers will change?
Are you talking about making maintenance of effort, Mr. Kissel?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Talking about making maintenance of effort? Is that?
I, I, you know, if we're cutting a psychologist and you're spreading out the workload between the remaining, is that correct?
Yes, I, or I think when you're talking about the 400,000, you're talking about the assessments that are going to have to be conducted as a result of the COVID closure. And the number of assessments that we're going to have to conduct using outside person, outside vendors is not yet known. We are asking families to extend their timelines for evaluation so that we can use internal personnel to do the testing. But the, the, the funding to do the testing is a portion of the contractual line in the special education budget.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Morennon, then Mr. Lipsit.
Again, I know Dr. Crowley Superintendent opened up tonight on the special ed segment, what a great job Maureen Ryan's doing. And the comment was made that at work allocation will be redistributed. We'll get a little clarification on that, either from Superintendent or perhaps Dr. B, if I could.
Yeah, so we have, we have, at the high school, for instance, there's two psychologists and the psychologists are kind of distributed around the schools. The primary function is doing assessment for special education, but they do provide some services for students with disabilities in areas like social pragmatics, self-awareness, you know, just different, different types of counseling for students with disabilities. So what would happen is the, the remaining psychologists would pick up portions, pick up extra assessments in a, in a different format than just having them assigned to the schools that we had, as we have in the past.
Thank you very much, Dr. B. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Morennon and Mr. Lipsit.
Yeah, so one of the things that I love about people who work in education is that we're always willing to try to, to say that we can make things work, even when that is a difficult thing to do. Administration strikes me as one of those situations and I appreciate that the administration is, is looking for creative ways to do this. And I appreciate that the administration is saying we can make this work. But again, I mean, we are going to be facing a lot of struggles coming back from this long closure. That is going to be doubly hard for our special education students. We're going to need additional testing. We're going to need a whole lot of stuff. And I, yeah, it, it, it feels like too much to be riffing people instead, and especially a school psychologist at this time. And again, I mean, I, I'll, I'll just go back to that I'm uncomfortable riffing anyone when we don't have any kind of specific number. I mean, I don't feel like, I don't think I have a question. I'll get off my soapbox.
Thank you, Mr. Lipsit. Any further discussion on that motion, Ms. Chisholm? You got your hand up?
I know that I had asked about this, but this was agreed to by Maureen and she's the expert in this and she knows her budget and she knows her people. So this was agreed by her, correct?
Yes. Okay.
But I, I just, I feel the need to clarify this through the chair to Ms. Chisholm. I understand that Ms. Ryan says that she's okay with this and I do trust her as a professional, absolutely. But also, people who work in education are trained through experience to always say that they can make it work, even when it will be really hard. And I, I would much rather err on the side of giving students the support that they need and giving our sped department the support that it needs.
We'll have support. They've had the CARES Act.
Madam Chairman?
We're good. Roll call.
Madam Chairman. You know, I, I appreciate, you know, and this is, I kind of, this is what I want from the administration. Sometimes you have to say, yeah, we can do it. And I want you to tell us when you can't do it. There's a difference and I think you guys understand that. And, you know, I'm going on the fact you say you can do it. If you said you couldn't do it, it wouldn't be one of these line items, so.
Correct.
That's sort of how I operate and I appreciate that from the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
No.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
No.
Mr. Morennon?
No.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
No. That motion fails three, four to three. Three to four. Failed.
I'll make a motion to retain the curriculum coordinator.
Okay, so that's.
Retain?
Retain to fund the position of curriculum coordinator.
Right.
For the school year 2021. A second?
Second.
On the motion?
Yes, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, you know, nobody wants to do any of these cuts and, you know, my leading the charge on this doesn't reflect the fact that I'm happy doing it. But sometimes I think somebody has to take a lead here and do things and, but I do think, you know, one of the great strides we've made is with these curriculum coordinators. And so, you know, this is my one attempt to try to maintain, I can walk away tonight and say, you know, we're, we're trying to hold back the flood. So that's my purpose in this motion.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Any discussion on, yes, Mr. Kissel?
On this, because earlier it was, it's specifically math and it was Brian Scaffington. And he wants to go back to the classroom or is it, that was his, you know, kind of the administration's option for him?
That was a choice that Brian made and even had a conversation with us prior to any of this happening.
So if we retain it, then we would fill that position again, correct?
Yes.
We retain it, yes.
Yeah, with somebody else. At this point, we would keep it. What's your plan? I think you alluded to doing a STEM and doing something else that would kind of fill in the gap where math would be missing if we eliminated this. So can you just explain that again one more time?
So it was doing a STEM and humanities.
Okay.
Humanities would, would cover the ELA and social studies. Remember, we were asking, prior to this, we were asking for a social studies coordinator.
The, just, just based on our, our math issues we have at the, and not, it's just, it's a middle school thing, I think, across the state, across the United States. I would definitely like to see that math position refilled. I think it's an important piece in our school system at least. There's a lot of remediation going into a lot of the schools from our kids that go through the high school. Doesn't mean that, you know, the teachers aren't doing a great job, but I think it's a, it's a tough thing for a lot of kids. So I definitely want to see that filled back in. If he's Lee, if he wants to move on, that's, that's fine, but I would like to see it rebuilt.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kissel. Any just further discussion on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is there a position open for him to return to?
Yes. Yes, there's a math position at high school.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Ms. Chisholm?
No.
Ms. Cormier?
Sorry, we're keeping it? That was the motion?
Keeping it, retaining it, yes.
No to not. Yes, let's keep it.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsit?
No.
Mr. Morennon?
Yeah. What was that?
What?
Yes, in favor?
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes five to. Okay. It's getting on to be N03. We still have a meeting, meeting tomorrow night. I'm just letting people know what the time is. Go back at this tomorrow night. We've done a considerable amount of work.
What, what are we going to do tomorrow night, Madam Chairman? I went through the list.
You went through the entire list?
Yep.
Okay, so tomorrow night, we're going to look at the budget of the items that we added back in and the items that we allowed to cut.
You didn't do the, excuse me, you didn't do the justice, the sped chairperson or the freshman sports?
Well, I did make a motion. There's no second on freshman sports.
Okay.
Yeah.
There was no second on that.
Okay, so that failed. All right.
Okay, so we've narrowed it down. We've done some work and I think tomorrow night we look at it.
I thought we did the sped chairperson thing. I think I did that one, didn't I? Did I not do that one?
Nope.
Why don't I just finish it out then?
Yeah.
I'll make, make a motion to adjust the sped chair per people to reduce it by 43,000.
Okay, any not motion person? It's not a reduction of services, it's just an adjustment. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll say yes. I didn't hear what you said.
Mr. Lipsit?
Yes.
Mr. Morennon?
No.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes six to one.
Still have the MCAS tutors.
MCAS tutors.
Make a motion to eliminate the MCAS tutors, 25,000.
Okay, I have a second.
No.
Okay.
I did a second, sorry.
Oh, that was seconded. Okay, so any discussion on that motion to eliminate the MCAS tutors?
Can we hear from the administration again, Madam Chair?
Of course we can. Administration, clarification on that?
That money was removed, I, I think initially a year ago. But it was, it was retained in the budget for some reason a year ago. When we met with principals last year and talked about this, there was not significant correlation between the MCAS tutoring at the elementary and the middle school, consistent attendance, consistent programming that was used. And administrative group along with the principals, the decision was made to remove that.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Frigg. Appreciate that clarification.
Thank you.
Clarify further that there are no current, there are no MCAS tutors who are currently employed who would be losing any positions from this.
The MCAS tutoring money went to our current staff who were willing to work afternoons.
And do we have, I mean, I, I know that everything is an ever-evolving situation. But do we have any sense of what MCAS may even look like next year?
Slightly.
Okay.
Um, what we know is that the, at the high school level, that's, the commissioner announced yesterday or today, students are taking science, high school students that are in ninth grade now. They're going to waive the science component of the MCAS for next year and allow a course to fill that requirement. That's the only adjustment thus far.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lipsett, Mrs. Chisholm?
Yes, so on the elementary and the middle school, there wasn't a lot of kids that stayed for the tutoring. I just feel that since we missed so much school, I don't know what that's gonna look like this year when these kids come back. And, I mean, we don't want to eliminate the extra support for the actual kiddos that come in and need the help. I just, I have a hard time with this one. But you're saying that we never used that line item last year?
We used line item. I mean, we had, we attempted to use it for a very few number of students at the elementary level this year. But looking at students, there's, there was not a requirement for consistent attendance at these tutoring sessions. Some of them were used as drop-in sessions.
Okay.
In fact, in looking at MCAS scores, students, year to year, it's not significant at all.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure.
We also won't have scores, obviously, for this year.
Right. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that?
I'm Madam Chair for me, I'm sorry.
Of course, Mr. Malrennen.
I, again, a partnership that the school department has developed between the, the after-school programs at the Boys and Girls Club, as well as the YMCA programs. I know this MCAS stuff is very important, and I know the partnerships are strong. So this time, I'd also recommend that the administration make note of that, that you can also work on strong in that partnership to help along with the students outside the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malrennen. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Craig?
I also mentioned that at the elementary level, one of the things that we did was create the WIND block and had content specialists to look at, to identify students who need skills in reading and math, so that they are providing those services throughout the day, throughout this year.
Thank you, Ms. Craig, that helps. So just to clarify, Ms. Chisholm's concern, it seems like the WIND program is doing a lot of the MCAST prep. I think that's, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that sounds like.
I, I'm not gonna say they're doing MCAST prep. They're working on standards and skills.
Okay.
That need in order to make progress.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor, roll call, please.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsett?
Yes.
Ms. Malrennen?
Yes.
Dr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, that motion passes seven zero.
I think I might have missed that ERI, teacher retirement, too.
No, we did it.
Oh, we did? I did that one? Okay. But I think that's it on this.
Okay, so I think we should move on. I think the administration is aware, very much aware of where the school committee stands. I think.
Madam Chairman, I'm not exactly sure they made, maybe, we, so what, what does the committee want them to do? Do we want them to still get to four percent?
Well, if they make.
Well, where are we at? Does anyone have a quick calculation? No?
I was kind of trying to do it, but.
Yeah.
We at least added about 500,000. We reduced it by 500.
You're gonna be over four.
Right.
Yes.
So do you want us to get to four?
Right, that's the question, I think.
Well, it'd be great if.
If, that's what I'm trying to get for you, Joe. I'm trying to find out what the will of the committee is. So the way to handle that, Madam Chairman, maybe, is if people want to put those things back that I went through, that there were no support for, then that'll tell the, that'll tell the administration where to go with this budget.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So we went through all the suggested cuts.
Yes.
Committee voted to accept some and didn't vote to accept others. So what it's needed to direct the administration is for the committee to go through the ones that they didn't want to do and make motions to add that money to the budget. And that will give them their final, administration their final line item. Otherwise, they're just kind of spinning their wheels. They don't, you know, we told them to get to four, they're over four now, probably, as Joe says. And if they're still under that direction, then they're gonna go look for more cuts. But obviously, if the committee wants the final budget to be, all these things added back in, they should take action now and get it done with.
Well, on, on that, if, if we add back in the kindergarten powers, the high school reductions, I mean, I just do not want to add the testing back. I don't want to cut the testing out. If you want to reduce it by that.
What testing? No, I'm saying, we already cut the testing.
No, we didn't. We didn't vote on that. It failed.
No, you're talking about the high school reductions, non-salary, not the MCAST tutors, correct?
Right, right.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the committee should go back and do the other ones and make motions. I can't do all the motions for everybody.
Right, right. Thank you, Johnny. We appreciate it. Like I said.
We would have been sitting here all night if.
Well, we made, we made considerable progress. And what we were aimed to do, which was to either accept or reject the proposed cuts of the administration, and we went through it, and, and maybe the next step is to just see where we are with the, with budget version 11, and see if we can actually pass that.
Joe, do you have any idea where we're at? We're over four, but high four, low four?
I don't know.
There are things, there are things the committee probably wants to put back in that you gotta direct the administration to do that hasn't been done yet. We've had some, some things.
Are there five things?
We rejected some cuts, but that doesn't mean the stuff is put.
All right, there is five things that they proposed to cut that we did not approve to cut. So if they add those five back in, that's where we will be.
There has to be a motion to that effect.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we add those five things back in, and then we'll see where we are for a percentage.
Okay.
I see what you're saying. Okay, so things that we didn't cut have to be.
Added back in.
Back into the budget. Got it. And there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chisholm?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Cormier?
Yes.
Mr. Kissel?
Yes.
Mr. Lipsett?
Yeah.
Mr. Malrennen?
I just want to clarify on what that's gonna accomplish again, please. I was off for a minute.
It's gonna get us a number, Mike.
And, okay, I guess I'm in favor.
Uh, else, no.
And again, Pat, we shall remember there are access to a general fund.
Right.
And Ms. Crowley?
Yes. Okay, so.
Sorry, Dr.
We, we were given a list of proposed cuts. We accepted some of them, and we denied some of them. And all the ones that we wouldn't cut are added back into the budget, and we will relook to see what the budget like with those, with those adjustments made then. And then publicly, we can make further cuts, or we can accept the budget as is, put it on for a public hearing, and be done.
Right.
Done, you know, because this is all, could be potentially preliminary budget planning that could change drastically. So why not just make a budget based on the school committee and try to pass it? And if we need further funding from the city, perhaps work with the city to get us where we need to be for fiscal year 21. Okay, so it's 10 o'clock, uh, 10, excuse me, 10:15, um, on the agenda is finance subcommittee only as it pertains to budget. We could table that.
We'll table that.
Okay. And I have two pieces of correspondence from parents who wanted to be heard on the budget. I can, I could table those for tomorrow night as well, added, but I will mention two names. Lisa Lorette wrote me a nice email on supporting our powers. And Jennifer Barry, Brett Redbone-Woobern also wrote to me about adding athletic fees, even though she didn't complete the survey. So she wanted her voice to be heard there. We do not need executive session. I'm looking at Dr. Crowley.
I don't believe so.
No, we don't. Okay. And if we do, again, we have tomorrow.
I think tomorrow, we would be good to that.
Okay. Um, thank you, everybody.
Do you want to forward those emails? We did, we all got the one from Jennifer Barry, but the other one, if you wanted to forward it to us, we can just file the record tomorrow.
Yes, Mike, I went to my Gmail and it wasn't working. So I will absolutely forward those emails to you and anything else I receive to the school committee. I want to thank everybody for their really difficult, challenging work tonight. I want to thank the administration for all the work that they're doing on behalf of our students. And I want, again, apologize to the public who couldn't get into our meeting, but I am going to work on getting a 250-person limit for tomorrow night and try to stream our meeting on Facebook. So I will make those changes. Okay, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Again.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Malrennen.
Yeah, good evening. I just want to remind you again, I said it earlier, I know you did specify that you read off the governor's guidelines on open meeting laws. I just, perhaps we can look for another reference for that tomorrow night, because people were upset to see when they, of the 100-person limit. I know it was out of our control. I know you're gonna make an attempt tomorrow night to exceed that. But if you could come up, again, with verbiage from the governor that stated that we could do that, that difficulties is written there somewhere in the fine print. I just feel that people deserve an explanation as to what happened tonight, and we were very unaware, it caught us all by surprise. And I just wanted to make sure that they can get it. And I know cable TV had it, so they tried their best. But I just want to make sure the public knows it was not anything on our end. Apologies accepted, and we should get out, but they can get on tomorrow night, how to do it, and if we have to exceed 100 people, whatever it takes, I'll let, let us do that after. Thank you.
Yes.
And we did just get a suggestion on chat, and it echoes one that I've gotten a couple of times already this evening to set up a webinar, which will have a mud marker cap, so we may want to look through that.
Yes, I, I signed up for the Zoom myself and never imagined there would be more than 100 people. So on the motion to adjourn, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.